Twenty-nine, application for a tow company by Christopher Cross doing business as Black Diamond Emergency Roadside and Recovery.
Ms. President, Ms. Blaylock, did we ever get in?
No, sir. Every time I called him, I got that same recording that he was not accepting calls and I had no address to send it to.
So, Ms. President, if they do not show up in the regular work session, I would like to table this indefinitely.
Item thirty, review of all-out towing, thirty-seven eighty-three, where's Ferry Road?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. We're just gonna table this for right now, if you will, please. Thank you.
Item thirty-one, ordinance amending chapter twenty-seven to add Article Six regulating dangerous pedestrian conduct in public right-of-way.
Any questions? Ms. Beard, Mr. Samensky?
Mr. President, it seems to be pretty straightforward, but we're trying to figure out a way to address pedestrians of any kind in our medians and right-of-ways. We've had a number of pedestrian incidents that have kinda necessitated this, and I think this kinda takes care of that issue, and it's across the board. So, you know, that's all individuals, fundraising, selling the newspapers, all that kinda stuff, no longer being allowed inside of our medians.
And, Mr. President, we've talked with Chief Grayboys, connected with Chief Cunningham, we also connected with Montgomery Public Schools to make sure that their athletic program or whomever understands the process and where we're going with this, it's for pedestrian safety. And since we're the, we have some problems within that area in our city, we're just working on making sure all people are safe in the roadways.
Okay, more questions?
Sir?
It's got inside there that a verbal warning is given, and then if there's no compliance, it's a misdemeanor. I think that's it, if you look at it.
It says a citation.
Yeah.
It's pretty self-explanatory.
So, if you can give a citation, my question is what's the fine? How much?
What's the fine? I actually don't know if we actually outlined a fine for this. I just think that it's labeled as...
So, is, Mr. President?
As a misdemeanor. I don't know what the fine is. I don't know if we, I don't think in the conversation that we had that we were told we needed to include that information in the ordinance.
Stacy, isn't that, isn't that said in the code the judge has? Stacy? The fine on the pedestrian, he said it was a misdemeanor. Isn't that said in the code? Or does the judge say it?
For a misdemeanor, it is established by state code, but it, but our ordinance capping the fine would still apply. So, you're saying we need to put a fine in there? Is that what you're saying?
No, it's already inclu, I think you're saying state statute already includes what that would be.
Mr. President, I have a question. So, this gotta penalize homeless people for asking you for a dollar?
It's gonna make it so that all, any individual that's in the right-of-ways medians can no longer do so.
Those that are coming into our city, we have a lot of folks that come in from Mobile, Birmingham, that are coming in, and they're out in the roadways with buckets and coming up to windows. It's an unsafe situation, and it's impeding traffic. And so, there's just stipulations of where the pedestrians of any kind can be on the roadways. And how are we supposed to tell if the person is homeless, not homeless, that doesn't prevent any of their, their right of speech with anything? So, it's just taking them and making it a safe roadways for all those that are on the roadways.
Mr. President? We tried to, we did something similar about three years ago. We met with Southern Poverty Law Center a couple of times. They had no problem because we were, it was for the safety of the people in the road. We had had several, it's not, it's not anything else. It's just trying to get them out of the road. It is for their safety, we're getting them out of the roadway. And I think this would help with that.
Just over the weekend, I believe, we had someone that was hit on Friday evening. It seems like we've had, I know we've had several people that have been hit in my area. So, it just makes it a safer roadway for those that are driving and those that are in it that are impeding traffic.
That person that was hit on Friday was crossing the street. He was not in the street.
Okay, my bad. I'm sorry. Please check that, please. Thank you.
All right, next item.
Thirty-two, resolution affirming the intent of the city to enter into an agreement with Jackson Healthcare, Jackson Investment Group as a partnership with the county to ensure the continuity and viability of the healthcare services to the citizens of Montgomery.
Any questions on thirty-two?
Yes, one, Mr. President. On the eighth paragraph where it says, "The City of Montgomery provided sixty percent and the Montgomery County providing forty percent of the agreed-upon funding," I was under the impression we were doing a fifty-fifty split.
Yeah, we couldn't get that negotiated on fifty-fifty-fifty, so we went to the providing what we always do with partnering with the county, which is for sixty-four.
Mr. President? Did the county present their resolution on today? What did the county do?
They carried it over to vote on the twenty, they introduced it today for...
They kept their vote on the next.
And their vote on the next meeting. I put this on the agenda. I think the city should lead the way and not wait on the county. We know the importance of healthcare and what situation Jackson is in at this time, and just waiting on them to leave for whatever reason. I just think we need to get out in front of this. So, in our intent to say we're willing to participate if all parties participate in this, President.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. I just wanted to make sure that they put it on the, you know, they did. That's all I wanted to hear. Yes, sir.
Mr. President, one comment. I agree with you fully. We need to lay, lay the pack on this.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bryant.
Mr. President, really quick, does the conditional on the state and also the presentation included information about the rate with Blue Cross Blue Shield? Are those both of the contingencies?
Those are all contingencies on both of them.
Thank you.
Next item.
Item thirty-three, resolution authorizing the mayor to execute contracts without council approval.
Okay. That resolution is based on the last resolution that we had that failed at the council, so we have to set an amount for the mayor on contracts being signed. So, we'll take that up. It's unlimited right now with no council approval. Based on, if you look at the thirty-three, it tells the limitation based on state statute and law following the contract guidance. So, we'll take the will of the council on item thirty-three. Any questions?
Yeah, Mr. President. I thought over the last year that we'd had a lot of success, actually, with the number and the limit that we had at the fifty thousand. I think all but maybe one contract was reexamined and then eventually went through as well. And I think it's important for this group to think about the level of transparency and just information as the stewards of taxpayer dollars that we wanna have when it comes to signing major contracts. I know last year when it was presented, we talked about potential for slowdowns. Didn't really see any of that or even have any comments from departments about any of that as well. And so, I understand that, you know, there was a way things were done. I just think that over the past year that that went well. And I would hope that the council would at least think of a number that we would consider. You know, fifty thousand dollars from what we saw, and I talked to the clerk's office, was the highest rate or highest cap level in the state. And so, if other municipalities, this municipality did it well this past year, I think that we really should be talking about a number to make sure that we're still efficient as a city, but also have that level of oversight and transparency.
Can I, Council President?
Mr. Reed?
I just want to clarify, there were slow-ups with contracts. It's just not evident to this body because there's a timeline in which they get presented to the council, but if it doesn't make the deadline, we just roll to the next. You would never know that. And so, there, there were numerous slowdowns when it came to contracts. It's just not evident to you because you only see what gets put in front of you at the council meeting. But on the daily operations of the city, there's numerous contracts we've had to hold up or not execute and be behind. To that point, I mean, you know, there's, there's a lot of business that happens in the city that we, we actually did not do it in a timely manner because we had to wait on the council. So, I just wanted to be clear there that there were slow-ups. It there, it may not have been evident to this body, but my staff will tell you, there are numerous times that we had to roll things two weeks that should have happened in the council meeting before that, so.
Mr. President?
Thank you, Ms. Reed. Ms. Johnson?
I guess I can give a good example of something most current, written conversations on one bid that is out. And it was to the least of three hundred thousand, and if I would have delayed it, it would not have went through. So, I would ask the council to consider maybe five hundred thousand dollars, and we can revisit it again in a year. Because if I had done that, then we'll be delayed, and the project that we've been waiting on for three years would not have happened again. So, maybe five hundred thousand would be a good consideration to make.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Anyone else? All right, next item.
Thirty-four, resolution ascending to the vacation of a portion of Lawrence Street between Randolph and Columbus Streets.
Anyone have a question on thirty?
Go ahead, Councilwoman Samensky.
I just wanted to make sure, 'cause this is that area over off Randolph and Columbus. It's just the kinda small, narrow strip of parking?
Yeah, I checked it out, and I spoke with the department, and they assured me that that is not the same lot, and it won't be affected.
Excellent.
Yes. No, Ms. Johnson had, we just had gotten an email on it.
All right, thank you. Next item.
Item thirty-five, resolution authorizing the city to join City of Tuscaloosa in litigation against the Alabama Department of Revenue regarding the simplified sales use tax.
All right, any questions for thirty-five?
How much money is that gonna mean for us?
I know, Ms. Beville. Do you remember the estimate that you presented to us when you did that, Ms. Beville? And I said, "Ed, didn't you attend the meeting in Tuscaloosa?"
For me?
Uh-huh. For the SSUT.
Yeah, I know you're talking about SSUT, and what was Mr. Bryant saying?
Do you remember the estimate that we could possibly gain? You gave us a really good presentation some years ago.
I know, in twenty-three, that was the last time we tracked the data. I would need to go back in and look at it. We keep the numbers, but I have not had that kinda time to put that together.
Bob is behind you, I think he...
So...
Yeah, we could tell you probably for a month, but as far as based on getting, what, sixty percent of the four percent that we do get compared to getting three and a half cents, the difference or the variance there, it would take a minute to do an Excel spreadsheet to bring it from twenty-three up to now. So, we do have loss.
Currently, we're getting sixty percent of the four cents. Is that correct?
Yes.
So, our goal is to get up to three and a half?
Which equates to about two, I think it's two-point-four percent instead of your three and a half percent.
So, we're, the sales tax instead of eight is gonna go to ten? Is that what we're saying? Like it is now on our city sales?
Well, that would be what we would like. The state made themselves whole because they still get their four cents.
Right, right. They, they were the winner in this deal. Correct.
So, it's the city and the counties and municipalities that did not end up being whole because they only collect on online sales eight cents on the dollar, whereas your brick and mortar collects ten cents.
Correct.
And on the ten cents, the city gets three and a half cents of each dollar. Right now, we're getting two-point-four cents of each dollar for online sales.
Yeah, I was just making sure because I knew we, we were getting a little hosed, at least a penny more than on each, each sale compared to normal.
Right, so I don't have those numbers, the toes in my head and everything, but you can see the difference there in the two-point-four and the three and a half cents.
And what I can do, Council, is once we pass this, I already have the attorney that's working this case ready to come present to us to know what our next steps are.
Sounds like the winner.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Now, clerk?
Item thirty-six, resolution authorizing the mayor to make application to Delta Regional Authority for a grant for four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for funding the Fairview Collective.
Mr. President?
Ms. Riley?
Can I have someone explain this collective to us, please?
Ms. Reed?
Hi, so the grant I applied for is through Delta Regional Authority. It's going to be going toward the Fairview Farmers Market. At the time I received the project, there was a gap in funding. I applied for two gaps within, two grants within Delta Regional Authority, one being for five hundred and twenty K, another being for four hundred and twenty K, which covers the gap that would complete the project and keep us moving forward. This specific grant requires that we have a resolution that says we'll matching funds for about a hundred and fifty K. The way we're doing it is in-kind through employee salaries to be able to cover for that in-kind match. We have met with them. They said it is okay if we do it that way.
You good, Ms. Riley?
I'm good. I just wanted to make sure the breakdown was correct. So, what's the process and how long after we apply for these grants that do you know of that we will hear anything on it?
So, both of the grants were applied for at the end of August. As far as this resolution, as soon as we get it in, it is, it's the last part that is missing from this grant. We should hear back no longer than, I would say, December at the earliest, January the latest.
So, so our first contract of the day, I apologize, I missed, for a hundred and nineteen thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars. It's working on that same farmer's market, correct?
Yes.
I don't wanna go back and rehash, but what was that for? What was this one nineteen for?
So, the one nineteen that you see is actually for the contract for our architects to go ahead and get started, so we can actually start the project itself. The project itself has been in its own way for about three years now, probably longer than that if I'm being honest with you. So, I'm coming in basically to push it forward. So, the one nineteen you see is separate from the actual grants, going toward the same project, but one is for the architects, the other one is so we can fill the gaps, we can keep pushing.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Item thirty-seven, application for an event center doing business is venue nineteen, event space at nineteen South Court Street.
I'm okay with it, Mr. President.
All right, next item. Ms. Bob?
We had received word allegedly of a couple of events that had been planned, allegedly tickets sold. We didn't get an application or anything on this.
Are you, what are you saying, Bob? There's no, what are you saying?
We didn't get an license application, anything.
Do they have a business license?
No.
Okay.
That's what they wait on. Let me, uh, we'll carry it over for right now.
Item thirty-eight, application for a conference center doing business is Summerlin's Place, thirty fifteen West Fleming Road.
Hi. All right, on this one brought to my attention, they got a resolution for an event center sometime back, maybe a year or two. They never got a CO for it. So, now they're applying for a conference center. So, what's gonna happen with the other resolution?
If you'd made me aware of it, we could have drawn up a resolution repealing the previous one.
Right.
We're gonna carry it over, and let's do a resolution the next time to repeal the previous one.
Okay, we carry it over.
Item thirty-nine, resolution reappointing Jeff Jones to the Parks and Rec Board. Forty, resolution appointing Angela Calvin to the Housing Authority. Forty-one, resolution appointing Brittany Lee to the Architectural Review Board. Forty-two, resolution appointing Kayla Dixon to the Planning Commission. Forty-three, resolution concurring in the reappointment of Carrie L. Owens, Jr. to the Joint Public Charity Hospital Board. Forty-four, resolution concurring in the reappointment of Henry A. Frazier to the Joint Public Charity Hospital Board. Forty-five, appeal of proposed demolition of six thirteen through six nineteen Watts Avenue by David Herman.
I will do that discussion during the actual council meeting. I have some community members that are gonna be here, but we'll let them speak anyway. Forty-five.
Item forty-six, appeal of assessment cost of abatement of nuisances by Amos B. Sunday, one oh one Davis Street. Forty, forty-seven, appeal of notice of nuisance, abatement of nuisances at two twenty Marshall Street by Oscar Boykin. Forty-eight, are your proposed demolitions of unsafe structures at those listed locations. Forty-nine is resolution assessing the cost of abatement of unsafe structures on various lots. Fifty is a resolution declaring assess, authorizing and assessing cost of abatement of public nuisances on various lots.
And then I got another one that we'll do it.
What you got?
He, what'd you say? What'd you say, Charlie?
I've got, I've got one we'll do an appointment in the, it's ready to meet.
Okay.
And I have two ordinances myself, Mr. President. Uh-uh. Let me ask you something. Bob, the information that you had for the venue, do you mind emailing that to the council, please? The venue, you said you had some flyers, can you send that to me for venue nineteen?
Well, I'll try and get it to you by the end of the week.
Thank you.
Mr. President, you wanna go over the contracts that are to be introduced, or you just wanna wait till the meeting?
I really didn't wanna bother with those contracts today, but it's the will of the council. Contracts need to get to us prior to...
Yeah, the only contract I had a question, I think I've already asked.
I guess we need ones that need to do.
You got a stack of new ones in front of you that I put in front of each one of you.
Okay, yeah, we've talked about.
It's totally up to y'all. Y'all let me know what you wanna do.
Okay, Ms. Blaylock.
Okay, resolution approving and authorizing mayor to execute a contract, which is our letter of agreement with Progress Rail Services for railroad repairs at Kershaw Burbank and Kershaw Dunbarton. Resolution approving and authorizing the mayor to execute contract with Dubose Construction Company for three hundred and ninety-four thousand, three hundred and ninety-nine dollars and fifty cents for grading and construction of Millard Fuller Drive Extension. Resolution of authorizing, approving and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for Flot Group Incorporated, McConnell Jones, and Crook Pest Control. And also a resolution approving and authorizing the mayor to execute contracts with Express Grips, M. Winds, Gallagher, Assured Partners, and Blue Cross Blue Shield of Alabama.
Okay. Anyone have any question on the contracts that you have?
Ms. Blaylock, I got a question.
Yes, sir.
I apologize. Like, number two, didn't you say Dubose Construction? Or did I misunderstand that?
Yes, sir. Dubose Construction Company.
So, so a new one on here, where's it at?
It's extra pages that I had laying out before you. It's not on the agenda. These are add-ons being introduced from the floor.
A whole stack of stuff.
Yes, sir, there's a stack of them, and it's the second one in the stack.
All right, Ms. Riley?
Okay, I got a question. I mean, I understand that this was just placed up here, but we have not had opportunity to read over this and look at this. This is a last-minute thing that you want us to look at in a brief moment and make a decision. I would love to look over and read like I do my package when I get it.
Point, we'll take it. All right, anyone else?
Mr. President, um...
Ms. Beard?
Mr. Pat, Patrick, Mr. Johnson, can you come up, please? We've been working on this railroad contract for a very long time, almost two years. Stacy has finally met, and we've talked with the Kershaw Railroad. We have finally got all the points and all the terminology like we need. And I would really like to consider, since this is a hazard to people driving over the railroad tracks with the spikes coming up out of it. We've had emergency things that we had to trim and do on this. And we're getting claims constantly into Ms. Blaylock to get this fixed from citizens that run over and it punctures their tires. The railroad tracks really need to be done, and they are willing and ready to go. Patrick, can you, can you attest this, please?
That's exactly right. This, this is one of seven railroad crossings that, well, actually, there are two in this first. It's kind of a pilot project to see how this works for them, but if all goes well, there are five additional ones that also exist in the Grimes District and some others. This is a private railroad line that runs through the City of Montgomery. That's, the line is owned, the property's owned by Kershaw, but it's actually run and operated by Progressive Railroad. They've come to the table asking that we kinda work together. And it's, it's for the public good and the public need, and the sooner we can fix this, the better. And if all goes well, we will come back again with additional improvements in other crossings throughout the city.
Okay, Mr. President?
Ms. Riley?
I got a question then, 'cause I've got Air Base Boulevard that I've been talking to you all constantly about that needs to be fixed. And I have not gotten any results on Air Base Boulevard, but to fill in on some, some ends and what, and keep moving. We, I constantly, the city constantly get complaints all day by Air Base Boulevard. That is one of the highest-traveled roads around here, and it's a miss as well as a railroad track. And I've not been able to get assistance on that end as well. So, that's why we're, we're gonna look at contracts for these railroads. We need to look at all contracts for all railroads that need to be placed and fixed.
Yes, CSX is a little bit different animal. They actually preexist in many cases, the roadways that were there. And so, and many times, they're just much difficult, more difficult to deal with. In this case, it's a private, local company. CSX is a much larger organization, but we will do everything we can to try to get, get them to improve that crossing.
Mr. Johnson, weren't the railroad tracks graded as one, two, three, four? Who needs to have theirs done, so to speak? And then we had that big incident back in the late summer.
And what you're looking at, the one that's for you today, we did rank those one to seven. And again, they've come to the table agreeing to replace all the metal, the cross ties, the grading, everything. And so, it's, it's a good partnership between us, and it will allow us, if all goes well, to fix this and really make it, make a difference in those crossings. And Ms. Beard's exactly right. We've got a number of claims that people claim and think it's our fault. We refer them to Progressive Rail because it's not, not our responsibility to maintain the rails. It is Progressive Rails to do that.
And we have worked on this for a very long time.
We have a lot of claims on Air Base Boulevard, the same thing also on Birmingham Highway. Alda has wrote them as well, and everybody is informed. I've also talked one time about you all with Air Base Boulevard, that is Water Conference, CSX, and City of Montgomery. We have talked about this constantly, and no one seems to wanna take the spearhead to see what we need to do about those railroad tracks in District Four.
I'm asking the council to please push this one through today so we can get these two out of the way and continue to move. Are these the only two that are done by Progressive in Kershaw, right?
This is two of seven.
Two of seven. Okay, thank you. Well, I misquoted.
Okay, any other question? All right, Ms. Blaylock?
Yes.
That was the last contract, right?
Yes, sir, that was, that was the last I had of those.
No, we have another one I'd like to discuss as well. This contract that also is on Millard Fuller. And Ms. Olson, if you can help me with this, please, I think.
Well, I read that one. That's why he was asking me. I read that one, so it's before the council.
Okay. So, Holly, if you'll help me out on this. This is a real unique situation. This road was in Ms. Johnson's district, and then it passed over to District Two when Brantley Lyons was in council. Brantley Lines was in council, and so then we inherited the road. It's out at New Hope Village. It's Millard Fuller. These residents have been without a road to get into their neighborhood. It's the Habitat Village, New Hope Village out there, and we have finally come to a conclusion and been in with deep, deep meetings with Ms. Johnson, who's now the, not so new, but new director of Habitat. So we're ready to come to the table when Fairview, while understanding is once Fairview is finished, then Dubose would come on over and start this project. It's a very deep project, and it was in partnership with Ms. Johnson and Brantley Lines at the time, and I'm also, we're also gonna be doing some sidewalk work and everything. This village has been there quite some time, and they need a road, an entryway in and out of Alabama River Parkway. So we're ready to go to the table with this and have gotten everything done, and I would like to have consideration, please, to push this through.
All right, any questions? Thank you, Ms. Beard.
I'm gonna accept them all.
You took early time. Too long in time.
All right. That's all you have on the...
Yes, sir, that's all I have. Um, Ms., yes, Ms. Blaylock, I just wanted us to go back to, there were several contracts that are on here that are related to insurance? Mm-hmm. And if you all do not vote on them, we're gonna have some lapses in insurance.
Yeah, we need those.
Like Express Scripps, BCBSS? Yeah, they're all on one resolution.
First Scripps, you can wait on that one, 'cause this, it goes next year, but there's two contracts in there that gotta go today.
Assured Partners?
You got liability on it.
All of those are on the same.
We need that liability case.
All of those are on the same resolution.
It's on the same resolution.
We've got all these on the same resolution. Partners, Gallagher, they're all insurance-related.
They gotta go.
Blue Cross Blue Shield.
October one renewals.
All right.
What'd you say, Ms. Olson?
Blue Cross Blue Shield.
So we got... Express Scripps, M. Winds, Gallagher, Assured Partners, and Blue Cross Blue Shield.
That's your liability insurance, insurance on the property of the city.
All right, so you need all those approved, basically?
Yes, we need all those.
And they're all in one resolution, I believe.
They're normal.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Babers. Any council have anything before we go to our public communication roster? All right, and I work session public communication. We also have Mr. Carlton Avery, created conflict resolution program for the citizens of Montgomery.
Good evening, council members.
Good evening.
Thanks for having me again today. We see an opportunity here in our community to provide a relief vow for its citizens, for some of their processes within the city government, as well as through the municipal court system. What we're seeing a lot of is that we're seeing a lot of people in our communities that are having issues are not necessarily criminal, and they're not necessarily hostile, but there's no relief vow for them to actually call, sit down, and meet people at the table to resolve their conflict without any type of criminal intervention. We also look at the administrative offices of the courts as it relates to our municipal court system running at a deficit of about three million dollars a year. We see where we can streamline that process and actually make the municipal court system actually more, and not profitable, I should say, but more efficient, and generate more income for the city. Lastly, we understand Neighborhood Services has done a great job as far as being present in our community. We would like to be able to establish a relationship where people can call 311 if they're having an issue and schedule a time to sit down with someone to resolve a conflict. I'm just, at this point, just introducing the proposal. I know that I've not had a chance to speak to every council member. I look forward to doing so in the upcoming weeks. I'd like to just see if I can submit more of a comprehensive proposal for your review for us to rule, for you considering and actually maybe eventually adopt a resolution for. So thank you for your time. Do you have any questions? I'd like to entertain any questions. I've talked to most of you.
All right, anyone have any questions? So you're proposing a, you say creating a contract, so you're proposing a contract? The creator's, you're just asking that you work through some of the department?
Well, it could be either contract or collaboration with the system that's already in place through Neighborhood Services. I can tell you that I've also, I've already talked to Judge Westry.
Okay.
And we know what's coming down the pipeline as it relates to the Speedy Trial Act, and we understand that more pressing cases need to be heard in front of our municipal court judges. We understand that there's a, we understand that there's some vacancies in certain offices already that are in place, and we see where we can step in. The Alabama Mediation, Mandatory Mediation Act is in place, allows such, for such a program to be started in our municipal court program, municipal courts. And previously, there was a municipal court mediation program. I'm not sure if you all remember, it was a, something around circle sentencing that was there in the early 2000s. So you would essentially just be reestablishing that and allowing people in this community, instead of waiting for a judge to decide the outcome and maybe getting sent back into our community jaded, whether they lose it or win their cases, giving them an opportunity to sort these things out with other members of the community and to resolve, of course, at the same effect, we'd have the same agreement on file. This is forcible the same way, it's just without the intervention of an actual judge that's gonna make, you know, a decision.
Okay. All right, anyone have any other questions?
I'm good.
Thank you, Carlton.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Carlton.
Hello. Thank you for having me. Hello, council, Ms. Babers. So I'm with River Region Trails. Many of you know we're a non-profit organization with a master plan that has over a hundred and fifty miles of proposed trail network in Montgomery and the River Region. And last year, we were awarded some ARPA funding from this council, as well as our county commission, that have gone to four catalyst projects. That is the Salmon Montgomery National Historic Trail, the Cypress Nature Preserve, the Riverfront Extension, and the Jackson Cut. And I took my position a little over a year ago and came in, and I wanted to make sure that we are fully pursuing the projects that we've already started to completion, as well as identifying other key corridors. And we put that together in a thirty-by-thirty plan that is a thirty-mile commitment to either have constructed or funding, started to a certain extent, thirty miles identified in our, by twenty-thirty, identified in our plan. And those include the four catalyst projects that we started, and other key corridors are South Court Street to go to the southern communities, Highland Avenue going east, the Zoo Trail, which will go up to the zoo from downtown, as well as Three Mile Branch watershed, contaminated watershed is a restreaming opportunity with a trail, and that will go to the Hunter Annex. Yeah, so just wanted to let you all know, do you have any questions about what we're working on?
Okay, any questions?
Mr. President, I have one. Can you, can you brief me what you said to Salmon to Montgomery Trail? What was your input in that?
Yes, ma'am, just that we're committed to seeing it through.
Oh, okay.
As you're aware, that did get some ARPA funding, and we have done design and feasibility for that project, and it's just our commitment to say we wanna continue to see it through. The city recently applied for a grant for that, that I was able to write a letter of support for, and it's just our commitment to continue to pursue funding together and support each other for its completion.
Ashley, I got a question. On the projects, your core projects, do you have enough funding to complete them all?
No, sir. No, I, now, I'll be clear, I'm not asking for any funding today from you all. But we are, it's the commitment to pursue the funding for them. So I just recently applied for an innovate grant for the Cypress Nature Preserve, and the city mayor read, was nice enough to write a letter of support for that. So it's just our continued commitment to work together to seek funding for these projects. Most of it will be grant-funded. There will be opportunities to find matches, you know, and at that point, I may be back in front of you, but, you know, there's also in-kind opportunities and other ways. So we're trying to pursue all exterior funding before we seek local funding.
No, that makes sense. Do you have enough money to do, complete one or two of them at this time, or no?
If the innovate grant comes through, the purpose of that grant is to get the Cypress Nature Preserve open by spring of 2027.
Sounds good.
So that would be, you know, a big win, but obviously, funding is not guaranteed, and, you know, just wanna be, we're committed to the next pot of money, you know, and so forth. But that's the hope, that would be a big one.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Can I ask you what your plans are for Three Mile Branch? This is, it goes off with the city, of course, but Council Grimes and I both kind of share the Three Mile Branch.
Yeah. So as you know, it's a hundred and twenty feet wide in some places, one of these massive concrete culverts that we have throughout Montgomery. The hope is that it's a restreaming opportunity, so get rid of the concrete, add nature, and use it as a walk. Now, obviously, there's big engineering that's gonna be involved with that. There's, you know, water studies, hydro studies, it's a very big deal.
Have you ever seen the water that flows through there after a storm?
You've mentioned that to me before. I'll have to drive out and see it.
We're talking it floods. And it's a river, and it's very swift, and the concrete is there to prevent the erosion. I mean, it's been there, am I right, Mr. Grimes? I mean, if you, when it rains, when we have a really, really, I don't, I love what you're doing and how you're promoting this for our city, but Three Mile Branch is a big concern to me because I'm talking, you could raft in it when they, after, I mean, a very short rain, very short rain. And this, you know, it goes away very quickly, but it's, the money that you would put in, I don't know how well that would be funded and how valuable that would be. That's just my, Mr. Grimes?
No, no.
Councilman Beard's correct. When you look at that, and I think Holly and Patrick could speak to this better than I, there's been two major floods in Forest Hills. We probably had one in sixty-something, and we had another where people, it went chest deep in their houses. So it's a very big concern to narrow that and make that go any further. And also, when it gets going like that, there's gonna be more erosion. So that, that would take a ton of engineering and would be incredibly pricey, so, yeah.
Thank you for your feedback. It's always important to hear. It is from our master plan, so it is not something that I have created out of thin air. It was studied at the time for the master plan and will be professionally handled throughout with assuming funding.
Mr. President, let me ask a question, please.
Ms. Riley?
I'm kind of rusty on what you really do.
Sure.
But trails are trails to walk, for people to walk on, is that correct?
Yes, sir, walk, bike, scooter. Yeah, walk your dog.
So is any money in what you do to pave existing trails that people would use for exercise or walking?
Yes, sir. So you and I have spoken about this before, and I am very well aware, we have the Trail Keepers, which is our monthly park cleanup initiative that we do, and so I've been to all the parks, and you were absolutely right that much of the asphalt trails in them are in very disrepair. I was actually just having a conversation before this meeting about that. I know it is on our radar as an organization, I know it's on Parks and Rec's radar as in need. They might be able to speak more fully to certain trails and some things that they've been pursuing.
You are coordinating with Parks and Rec?
Yes, yes. But that's something that we've considered and talked about at the board level, and, you know, may at some point pursue, 'cause we are getting a lot of that feedback, and it may end up being a partnership with the city at some point as well. But I hear you and I agree with you that...
The objective, I think, is to get people out and exercise, whatever, that would be your objective, I believe, get them outside.
Uh...
If they're tripping and falling on existing car paths, that's not good.
Yes, yeah. So I would say our objective organizationally is to help with the infrastructure development. I think there's often a misconception that trails are concerned with getting people out and active, which, you know, certainly proponent for, and we wanna grow that outdoor rec culture, but we're not here to motivate people. We're here to work with the city government on infrastructure investment, which absolutely falls within the parks and something that we're considering. Thank you for that input.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Ashley. Ms. Judge Blunt, Downtown Business.
Good evening, council. Hey, good evening. How are y'all? That was a surprise to call on me, but I'm a third-generation investor in this community. We did the cafe in Cloverdale, we did Ravello in City Fed a few years back. We're currently doing Grove Court, spending a lot of money, and we want to take on the Winter Building, but we're having second thoughts. Sunday, I was cleaning blood off the sidewalk in front of Ravello because we had an event Sunday afternoon, and, you know, the loitering and the entertainment district seem not, they're not working, and so I would hope y'all would consider getting rid of the entertainment district. And people need to keep walking, they can't loiter. I mean, in the nineties, it was the same thing. People didn't want us loitering, and so I urge y'all to do something. We love this city and want to stay here, but we need a, we need some things to stop, and so I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Blunt. Appreciate your service.
Mr. President?
Mr....
I know that there had been some talks, and I had spoken to Frank Robinson and some others, I know we are considering the entertainment district, and we've obviously spoken, and I've heard from other people. I own a business, The Downtown Profile, I'm sure Council Johnson's been hearing from people as well, and so I, you know, I hope that we can have that conversation and have that conversation quickly because, you know, to...
We're already getting events canceled.
Well, yeah, I was about to say.
I mean, you've had a...
I just had, I just had a event canceled as well, yeah.
Ravello, this was supposed to be a strong summer. Ravello was down thirteen percent, and we were counting on a good fourth quarter, and now that shot. So, you know, it's killing us, really. I mean, it's hurting small business downtown Montgomery. Every business I've talked to wants this going, so. Any other questions?
Judge, if you had a magic wand, if you had the magic wand, what would you do? If you were king for the day, what are you doing to fix the problem?
I would have, get rid of the entertainment district. None of the tourists that are coming to EJI are walking around with drinks. None of, I own Red Blood Bar. We're not selling drinks at Red Blood Bar in Riverfront Park for people to walk around. I would do that. I would have police on the ground, moving people along, not, not sitting in their car, you know. Some of the videos I've seen have been terrible, and, you know, a hundred people, a hundred and fifty people on the corner of Commerce and Bib, there's too many people to be standing there, smoking dope. You know, I'm running a high-end Italian restaurant, and it's hard to, you know, people come out from Ravello, and then there's, there's pot smoke, and there's, it's just not the right scene that we need on Commerce Street in Montgomery. Anything else?
If I can, if I can just clarify, so technically, we don't have an entertainment district yet. That was an ordinance that we were actually going to introduce, but...
Yes, ma'am. Yes, we do. So, yes, we do.
But one of the problems is nobody's enforcing the law.
Well, yeah, I mean, I think actually, Mr. President, that's a good point.
Okay, but my council is telling me that it's an amendment to what I'm saying, but the amendment that we were going to introduce, and I think we worked with you, Judge.
I was there, and I'm not for it, so.
Yes, well, it's on hold. It's on hold for at least a hundred and twenty days. We've already had conversations with the mayor, so, because we knew there was some concerns, and based on what recently occurred, you know, we are as concerned as the businesses, and we are committed to working with you all to ensure that your businesses continue to thrive, and we know that thirteen...
I'm thirteen percent down. I'm not thriving. I mean...
No, no, no. I said continue to thrive, I mean, before, before the incident, so, so it's gonna be a collaborative effort, but we, as a city, are committed to work with our businesses.
Well, Mr. President, I think one of the issues that I have with this is, I think what you're pointing out, which is that we have an ordinance on the books for the entertainment district, but we're not enforcing it, okay? The ordinance says plain and clear, it's gotta be a green cup, right? How many green cups do you see in downtown at nighttime? They're not, they're never green, right? We never, we don't stop people, we don't check cups, right? The whole issue, both of my businesses in downtown, we also don't do to-go drinks. We don't actually get very many requests... The, the whole issue, both of my businesses in downtown, we also don't do to-go drinks, we don't actually get very many requests for that. Uh, my, my bigger concern is that we are having people that are misusing the entertainment district, that's then snowballing into gathering and causing these issues, right? And so, if we were enforcing entertainment district, there'd be a lot of, a lot of activity, a lot of cups being removed, but something as basic as not even enforcing what is on the books for the type of container that you can have to have a drink in public? I mean, I think the idea of entertainment district in places is a good one some places, where they have full buy-in from the business, city, public safety, and make sure that we're regulating that. But to say you have an entertainment district and then not be, and, you know, I was at that meeting too, you know, we're, we're gonna, and that was one of the things that was brought up, was that, you know, what does this look like, and how we all get on board? And right now, it doesn't seem like there's a lot of people on board, given the timing, obviously, I know con- conversations are gonna have to happen, but I think, you know, if we could, we should consider whether or not having an entertainment district in downtown that is unenforceable the way it's written is something we need to have going forward.
Mr. President?
We need to go ahead and suspend the entertainment district until further notice, until we figure out how to make it work, this is killing business. If you're hurting thirteen percent, what are the other people doing? And what, and what's gonna happen in the next six months?
Right.
We gotta get out of this problem quick, and send the folks message that we got a safe place for them to come to.
Yeah, yeah.
We, 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 we've talked about it, talked about it, talked, it's time to go ahead and stop it, and get over with it, and go on, have, try to make our businesses profitable, and, and good business for folks to come to Montgomery and enjoy.
And there are locals boycotting downtown Montgomery, I mean, there are people that will not come downtown.
Exactly.
So, a lot of things need to change.
Mr. President? Miss, hold on, Miss Johnson, again, Miss Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I do have some things to speak to, some of the, um, issues you brung up, Judge, after we had our conversation, uh, we immediately went to work, I've spoken with the mayor, and, um, uh, basically had a green light to collaborate on the initiative to kick off, which we kinda started these pieces anyway, but to go ahead and fast-track it. Um, and we did, um, in this meeting that they're mentioning, uh, it was with our downtown businesses to discuss the updates, uh, and changes to the entertainment district. We were presented with some updates, um, that we have not pushed out just yet, because we still wanted to red ink it, um, but I'm sure we'll have this conversation in the very, very immediate future, um, and I look forward to that, and I'll do an introduction of what I have in store, um, at the actual meeting.
And the, the loitering is just as big an issue, I mean, that, you know, that didn't happen years ago.
And police presence, yeah.
On the sidewalk, and people need to be told to move on.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's not your right to have a party on the sidewalk.
Absolutely, I hundred percent agree.
Mr. President?
Mr. Brown?
Yeah, I, I think Mr. Blunt and the others have, have a big say, they're, they put their money in, and, and, and they're the ones on the line down thirteen percent, or it's gonna go worse, so we have to rely on them, because if they get disenchanted and leave, we have no businesses down here. We have nobody for the, staying in hotels to stay. We've got to have these folks, and we've gotta listen to them, because they're, they're, they're driving the train, we're not driving train, they are. They've got all their money on the line, it's not ours, it's their money on the line, so we gotta listen to these guys, whatever they want, we need to try to make that happen.
And just to clarify, Ed, there's, the meeting, it was with the downtown businesses, and they had the input, so, um, it's still adjustments being made, and it's a really, really immediate meeting coming up, where we'll go through some things and do another listening session.
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Blunt.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Thank you, Mr. Blunt, uh, we hear you, and I think what the problem is, what he said, it's about the loitering, uh, with people not moving through with the entertainment district, as I understand, when we pass that ordinance, it's for you to move from location to location, not to buy a, a alcoholic beverage and just stand on a corner, so we have to enforce the lottery part within the city of Montgomery, because when you get groups of people together, that's when you have problems, so, I agree with you guys, so we need to do what we need to do from the council, too. Repeal and move on, all right? Um, Mr. Louis Bell? Yes, sir. All right, good evening, everyone. You need his name for the record, Louis Bell, your name for the record, sir.
Louis Bell Junior?
Yes, ma'am.
Louis Bell Junior.
All right, downtown, last sheet, go ahead, sir.
Okay, well, I'm only here on behalf of, you know, a penalty before you all, because my cousin, my first cousin, Shalonda Williams, was involved in the tragedy that happened on this weekend, and so, that's why I'm here to stand before you guys, because that's a tragic moment for our family, and it's really took a great toll on our family, because, you know, it's just that moment of knowing someone that you love is stripped away from you so suddenly, and then having to find out so much along with that, and it's, it's been a, a lot for us. And I know it's been a lot for all of the families that have our experience and what we're going through, and so, as a, you know, a place, you know, 'cause I love Montgomery, I'm a proud individual who's graduated with a bachelor's of science in public health, also pursuing a master's, and so, I always wanted to give back to the community, and so, with that being said, I, I truly have a heart for Montgomery, and just seeing something like that happen, especially to my family that I love so much, i- i- it really traumatizes me as a person, and I'm here because I know the other families are going through the same thing that we're going through, and I, and I don't blame any city officials, I don't feel that there was anything anyone could have done, but I, what I do know is, for me being, working in public health, that there are things that we can do, such as implementing certain things that can allow to help, try to help those people who are, for instance, like those people, because mental health is real, it's a, it's a big thing here in Montgomery, Alabama, and those factors play a role into things like health, wealth, just being successful, things like that play a big role in implementing those certain things, and, you know, instead of like, for instance, like how we build, we can build a prison to lock up people who we think are bad, but are we helping to prevent the things for making people bad? Y'all, are y'all following me?
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
And so, as a growing society, I, like I said, I stand before you guys, because I see the hurt in my family now, each and every day, and me trying to mold and hold and just caress so many, and I know that the other families are going through that, and so, even so to say that on that night when the tragedy happened, my mom couldn't take the, 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 just the aesthetics of what was going on, and she passed out, and she was in the hospital, and so I couldn't even check on her, because there were so many families, they couldn't let, you know, let people in in the hospital on that night. And so, and then, for instance, my cousin, I don't know if everybody, you know, most of us here, you know, it's a, it's a growing society where electronics are what we use all the, all the time, and so if y'all didn't notice, I'm, I'll let you know, my cousin was the one that you saw laying there in the floor, you know, M P D's kinda walking around, and you see, then you see another video, that, they released another video where, you know, it's trending, and, you know, social media does what it does, and so, what's going on is just trending, and you see my cousin, she's walking just so politely, just, you know, going to have a good time, because our great mayor let me have Stephen Reed decided to say, hey, let's bring in a Ferris wheel, let's make Montgomery great, because the same way, you know, everybody travels to Atlanta to go ride, you know, go and ride the Six Flags, so he's trying to make Montgomery great, and then what happens is, you know, this tragedy happens.
All right, Ms. Bell, you can go wrap it up, that's your time, you want, you got anything, any question for Mr. Bell at this time?
So, I wanna know, what are you guys gonna do in order to pursue it? Because I'm willing to help, I'm willing to help as well, and to help promote the things that you guys wanna accomplish, because we have a common goal, I've lost my family member that I love, and you could be in these same shoes that I'm in, you're pretending to have nice shoes that I have on, you could be in these, what are you guys gonna do to help correct these issues?
Ms. Johnson?
Yeah, Mr. President, uh, Mr. Bell, I'm so very sorry for your loss, um, I know there's no words to even kinda just describe how you feel, nor the people that experienced it as well that night, um, I want you to know that, uh, I personally fully support the prosecutor's office in bringing forth the full extent and maximum law that we can as applicable to those that, um, committed this offense, um, and I know that the police department is working tirelessly, um, to, with other agencies to bring those suspects, uh, to custody, so, um, we're praying with you, we're mourning with you, grieving with you all, and, um, hopefully, uh, some of the things that we put forth after this will really, really bring the community back together and to also assist you all in healing, and I want you to know that we do have trauma support, uh, for your family and others, uh, free of charge at our local community centers, uh, River Region United Way, uh, you should have, okay, River Region United Way is also assisting and stepped up to help with anything that you all should need at this moment and at that time, and again, I'm just a call away, you have my number, and, uh, you can reach out to me anytime.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Ms. Mitch?
Hey, Mr. Bell, first of all, I'd like to send my condolences to your family, um, but this council and also the mayor, when we had that money for ARPA funds, we made sure that we put in money for, um, violence prevention, and we came up with two programs, we have, um, of course, our own program with the city, that's also violence and prevention, also, we enacted S O S, so, we, we won't be able to police our way out of the things that you were seeing in Montgomery, and I'm glad that you stepped up, you're still here in Montgomery, so you know, uh, what, what it's gonna take for the city of Montgomery to get back to where we need to be, and it's gonna take individuals like you stepping up, willing to do what it takes, and, and thank you so much, but please, um, I think Mr. Campbell is in here, I think Mr. Riley's in here, family guys are here, make sure you talk to them, so we can use an individual like you that's still connected to the city of Montgomery, so we can prevent anything like this that we are seeing here in the city today, so thank you, Mr. Bell.
Thank you as well, Mr. Bell.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Thank you, anyone else? Thank you, sir, I can go, just, we are your family.
Thank you.
All right, it's now five oh one, this meeting is adjourned, we will meet back at five ten.